I will now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, March 12th, 2018, and we will begin our meeting with the prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Councillor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is this on? Thank you, Mr. President. Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight as we've been tasked with making decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us for consideration. I pray that we always act in accordance with what is best for our community and all of the citizens of Indianapolis. Please watch over our public safety officials as they put their lives in peril to protect us every day. We ask these things in the name of your Son. Amen. Now please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillors, please select the green button to indicate your attendance. Counsel Oliver. Very good. There are 25 councillors present. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counsel Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take this moment to introduce three of my Nora Northside Community Council leaders. We have first and foremost Sagamore of the Wabash winner George Harley. We also have the long-term serving Sue Juras. And lastly, the incomparable mentee of the great Bert Servas and longtime staffer of Mayor Hudnut and also a Sagamore of the Wabash Award winner, Ms. Ruth Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize the members of the Laborers Local 120, DPW Ops and Street Maintenance, and my Ask Me Brothers and Sisters from Local 725 and 3131 if you could stand up and be recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Superintendent Dr. Jeff Butts, Jackie Manono, and any of the other Ben Davis folks that are here tonight. Would you please rise? There you go.
I believe you had hit your button. No? All right. Very good. All right. If there's no one else, the next item on our agenda is the official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, March 12th at 7:00 p.m., the purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, March 2nd, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number 88, 2018, said hearing to be held on Monday, March 12th at 7:00 p.m. in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Natrina DeBeau, Clerk of the City County Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Sir, Mr. President, one more. One more.
Very good.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Natrina DeBeau, the following ordinances: special ordinance numbers 1 and 2, general ordinance numbers 9 through 16, general resolution numbers 2 and 3, 4 and 5, and special resolution number 4. Joseph H. Hogsett, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of journals, February 28th, 2018. Do I have consent?
Consent.
We will proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. Proposal number 99, introduced by Councillors McQuillan, Lewis, and Osley recognizes the Kennedy-King Memorial Initiative.
Please come up and join us if you're here for the 99.
Thank you, Mr. President. City County Council's special resolution number 4, 2018, is a special resolution honoring the Kennedy-King Memorial Initiative.
Whereas on April 4th, 2018 will mark the 50th anniversary of assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas on April 4th, 1968, Robert Kennedy flew to Indianapolis for a planned rally at what is now the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Park promoting his presidential campaign and was informed upon landing of King's assassination. And whereas Senator Kennedy proceeded to address the crowd at 17th and Broadway near the site where the memorial now stands, he delivered an impassioned speech informing the crowd of King's death and urging racial reconciliation. No riots took place in Indianapolis, a fact many attribute to the effect of Kennedy's speech, and...
Whereas on April 4th, 2018, excuse me, whereas the Kennedy Memorial Initiative's KKMI mission is to build on the historical events of April 4th, 1968, to raise awareness, provoke thought, and inspire action to eliminate division and injustice in the community and beyond. And whereas on April 4th, 2018, there will be a commencement ceremony at the Landmark for Peace Memorial in Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Park, Congressman John Lewis, a renowned civil rights leader who was in Indianapolis on the night of 1968, will join the community and other national, state, and local dignitaries in commemoration. And whereas the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, Indigo, is a municipal corporation of the Indianapolis and partner of KKMI and provides bus service along College Avenue and will assist the current and new riders with direction and information by the way of their transit ambassador volunteers. Now therefore...
Beed resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes the Kennedy-King Memorial Initiative for promoting original programs that teach, support, and inspire, convening candid and courageous conversations, collaborating with organizations that align with their mission, and cultivating a strong and vital King Park community. Section 2, the council also recognizes Indigo as the public transit provider and strong community partner and thank them for their ongoing commitment and service to the citizens of Indianapolis. Section 3, in honor of this significant event and to raise awareness for Indigo's role in providing access for all residents in our community, the council directs Indigo to offer free public transit rides throughout the city on April 4th, 2018. Section 4, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, and he has. Section 5, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 363414, and this special resolution, sponsored by Councillor McQuillan, Lewis, Osley, and Jackson, was passed, will be passed by the City County Council this 12th day of March 2018. And Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was three years old at the time, so I was not in attendance on April 4th, 1968. I think any of us were in attendance in 1968 at that rally. But for Indianapolis, it's just one of those stories that makes me proud to be an Indianapolis native due to the calming words of Robert Kennedy. Indianapolis is one of the few major metropolitan areas that did not have rioting and basically being burned with the news of Dr. King's death. So it just makes me proud to be a Hoosier, proud to be a person here in Indianapolis living, and I'm very excited that the KKMI has put together this wonderful event. Is there someone here from KKMI? Just wants to very briefly say something about... Representative Porter, if you want to say something real quick about the events coming up on April 4th, that'd be fantastic. With your permission, Mr. President.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, councillors. On behalf of the KKMI Board, we are very excited about this resolution. It means so much to us. You see us, all of us here are part of the KKMI Board family. The third and the fourth are to be gone, be excellent opportunities for us, our community to come together, to continue to navigate, understand what peace really means in this time of tribulation throughout our country. KKMI and the Peace Initiative is something that we have done here for the last 20, 25 years. And as we continue to have this national conversation, as we continue to have this Indianapolis conversation, talk about one city, this is important to us. So we will have events with Congressman Lewis on the 3rd, on the 4th, Kerry Kennedy's coming here also during that time, along with other dignitaries from throughout this country. And we've even testified in front of Congress about having the KKMI section of that park to be part of a national place of registry. So it is something that we're very excited about. We love our park. That park is very crucial to this community. I know you said briefly, but it might get to flow. In the general assembly, we kind of move on. But really, it is the hub of seven neighborhoods, seven different neighborhoods. And with that being said, that is the fabric of our community, is the King Park, Kennedy King Initiative, and Martin Luther King Jr. Park. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and we're so grateful for this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Proposal number 100, introduced by Councillors Fister, McHenry, and Evans, recognizes the 100th anniversary of the Ben Davis High School Marching Band Program.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we present this with pride. I heard something said today that Wayne Township and Ben Davis Schools were getting an awful lot of recognition, maybe too much recognition. And I absolutely disagree. We have a lot to be proud of, and the band is one of those entities that we are very, very proud of. So this is a special resolution recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Ben Davis High School Marching Band Program. Whereas the Ben Davis High School Marching Band is celebrating nearly 100 years of excellence beginning in 1918, and whereas the marching band has taken Indiana by storm, having won a total of 14 Indiana State Marching Championships, the Indiana State Fair Band Aid Championships 1960 to 61, 64, 66, and 67, and the Indiana State Field Show Championships in '76, '77, '82, '84 through '88, and '93. They have also been finalists in the Grand National Finalist, 1981 to 1984, 2004, and 2018, and Bands of America Semi-finalists in 2000 to 2003, and 2005 to 2016, and... And I'll have you know, I was part of the last year that we won the Indiana State Fair, so that was one of my years when I was in the band. And if you do the math, you can figure out that I was there when on their 50th anniversary. Whereas the band was the Indiana State School Music Association, ISSMA Concert Band State Finalists from 1985, '87, 1991, '93 through '99, and 2000, 2004. And whereas the marching giants have performed in the Tournament of Roses Parade, Festival Estates Fiesta Bowl Parade, Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, Disney World Parade, Music for All National Concert Band Festival, just to name a few, also the Orange Bowl Parade. And whereas additionally, the band program has had numerous performances in the Indianapolis 500 Festival Parade and the opening ceremonies for the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, which is a Ben Davis Band tradition. And whereas not only has the Ben Davis Marching Band Program excelled in competitions, they have also represented the state of Indiana for the 19... 60? 60. Thank you. And 1964 Presidential Inaugurations, and have performed for six U.S. Presidents Dwight David Eisenhower, John F. Kennedy, Lyndon B. Johnson, Richard M. Nixon, Gerald R. Farwood, and Ronald Reagan. Now therefore...
You can see that we've been all over the country, but one of the greatest things is that they got to perform every Friday night with the Ben Davis Giants football team at halftime. Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana, section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes the Ben Davis High School Marching Band Program on their 100th anniversary. Section 2, the council extends its congratulations to the entire marching band director and school administration on this achievement. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by Councillors Maryland Fister, Councillors McHenry, Councillors Lewis, and myself, and was passed by the City County Council this 12th day of March 18th. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite up a couple of our director here and allow them to say a few words.
Beyond the thank you, the honor of this, I just want to put in perspective for you. I'm the 100th-year band director, but this started way back with a woman named Bonnie Scott in 1918. And a perspective check, that was before she had the right to vote. She started the first band at Ben Davis. And our second band director was also a woman. Those are things that we're very, very proud of through our research. Thank you so much, City Council. It is a real pride that we are not just representing the West Side and representing Ben Davis, but we're often an icon for Indianapolis, and we take that very seriously. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 348, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 348, 1920, 2266, 356, and 67.
Consent.
Thank you. The Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee met on Monday, March 5th, 2018. Proposal number 348 reappoints Kathy Good to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. The appointee could not make it to the meeting. Chair Lewis asked for consent to move the proposal forward based on her history and attendance of record. The proposal carried out of committee by a vote of eight to zero. Proposal number 19, reappoints Mary Kelly to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 2. Ms. Kelly appeared before the committee to seek reappointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero. Proposal number 20, reappoints Ms. Kim Boyd to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 3. The appointee could not be present on that night. Chair Lewis asked for consent to move the proposal forward. Counselor Jackson stated that Ms. Boyd has a long history with the city and her attendance has been very good. Based on her history and attendance record, the proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero. Proposal number 22, reappoints Anthony Bridgman to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. The appointee could not be at the meeting. Chair Lewis asked for consent to move the proposal forward. Based on his history and attendance record, the proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero. Proposal number 66, reappoints Kenneth Allen to the Board of Business Neighborhood Services. Mr. Allen appeared before the committee to seek reappointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero. Proposal number 356, appoints Paul Russell to the Woodruff Place Economic Improvement Board. Mr. Russell appeared before the committee to seek appointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero. Proposal number 67, appoints Jefferson Shreve to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Former Counselor Shreve appeared before the committee to seek appointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero, and Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Comments from councillors? Counsel Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I please be added to the resolution to add Jefferson Shreve to the Metropolitan Development Commission? Thank you, Mr. President.
Seeing no further comments, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries by a vote of 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 70. My apologies. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 68. Refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 68 approves the mayor's appointment of Emily Mack as the Director of Department of Metropolitan Development. Ms. Mack appeared before the committee and shared the 2017 accomplishment and the 2018 initiatives and answered questions by the committee. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eight to one, with Counselor Maury casting a negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Comments from councillors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries by a vote of 23 to two. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 70, refer to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 70, reappoint Laura Kaplan to the Indianapolis Greenway Development Committee. Ms. Kaplan stated that she has served on the Indianapolis Greenway Development Committee for several years and appreciate being brought up for reappointment. She stated that she has long had a personal and professional passion for greenways and trailways throughout the community. She also stated that she is currently the Executive Director of the Central Indiana Regional Transportation Authority and appreciates the opportunity to contribute to increasing the mode of transportation throughout our area. Mr. President, that motion was made by Counsel Simpson, seconded by Counsel Mascary, to send this proposal to the four councils with a due pass of five to zero. I so move, Mr. President.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Comments from councillors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries by a vote of 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 72, refer to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Mr. President, proposal number 72 seeks to approve the mayor's appointment of Linda Bradford as the Director of Department of Parks and Recreation. Director Bradford thanked the committee for their ongoing support of the Park Department. She also stated that her department is doing all that they can to accomplish so much work in over 200 parks all over Marion County. She also stated that it is rewarding endeavor to work in the Park Department. They get to create places and experiences that aspire. They get to impact children, singers of all ages and in between, and beautiful places with valuable programming and a sense of play. She also stated that they are on an upward trajectory and have the attention of park leaders around the country. Mr. President, it was moved and seconded, but a due pass recommendation of five to zero, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councillors? Counsel Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had to unfortunately miss this committee meeting, so I just wanted to say on the record that serving on the Parks Committee under Director Broadfoot's leadership has been a true pleasure. She and her staff and team do a whole lot with a whole little, and we certainly have a long way to go in parks in this city, but we are absolutely on the right track, and I'm enthusiastically looking forward to another year under Director Broadfoot's leadership. Thank you.
Counsel Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor of this proposal. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further comments, the motion has been properly moved and seconded. We will proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries by a vote of 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 73, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 73, 2018. With consent, could I take proposal 73, 74, 75? Proposal number 73, 2018, reappoints Mark Webster to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 74, 2018, appoints Megan Durbin to the Domestic Violence and Hospitality Review Team. And proposal 75, appoints Jessica Turpord to the Domestic Violence and Hospitality Review Team. All individuals were present and all passed out of committee, nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from councillors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries by a vote of 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 76, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposal 76, 77, 78, and 79. Thank you. Proposal number 76, 2018, approves the mayor's appointment of Brian Roach as the Chief of Police for the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. Proposal number 77, 2018, approves the mayor's appointment of Ernest V. Malone as the Chief of the Indianapolis Fire Department. Proposal number 78, approves the mayor's appointment of Paul T. Babcock as the Director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. And proposal 79, approves the mayor's appointment of Laura D. White as the Director of the Citizens' Police Complaint Board. Mr. President, all four individuals were present in the committee meeting. Proposal 76 and 77 passed nine to zero. Proposal 78 and 79 passed 10 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
And the motion has been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from councillors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Very good. Thank you. The motion carries by a vote of 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 80, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals 80 through 83 together. Thank you. Proposal number 80, reappoints Jamar Cobb-Denard to the Board of Public Works. Proposal number 81, reappoints Dr. Henry Fernandez to the Board of Public Works. Proposal number 82, reappoints Nathan Wilson to the Marion County Stormwater Management Technical Advisory Committee. And proposal 83 approves of the mayor's appointment of Dan Parker as Director of the Department of Public Works. All of these proposals passed out of committee with a vote of nine to zero, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from councillors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries with, with a vote of 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal numbers 89 through 91 all refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 89, introduced by councillors Lewis and Adamson, authorizes the Metropolitan Development Commission and the Department of Metropolitan Development to execute debt obligation in an amount not to exceed $1,750,000 to be loaned to Adult and Child Residential Properties LLC as a Section 108 Loan Guarantee applicant for the acquisition of three apartment buildings and related costs to develop affordable rental housing and permanent supportive housing. Proposal number 90, introduced by councillors Adamson, Lewis, and Feaster, authorizes the Metropolitan Development Commission and the Department of Metropolitan Development to execute debt obligation in an amount not to exceed $4,575,000 to be used for infrastructure improvements to facilitate redevelopment in the central state allocation area as a part of the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program and appropriates the proceeds. Proposal number 91, introduced by councillors Adamson and Lewis, authorizes the Metropolitan Development Commission and the Department of Metropolitan Development to execute debt obligation in an amount not to exceed $5 million to be used for infrastructure improvements to facilitate redevelopment in the Fall Creek Citizens Consolidated Redevelopment Allocation Area, Monon 16 Infrastructure, as a part of the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program and appropriates the proceeds. Proposal number 92, introduced by councillors Ossley and Gray, refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee, reappoints Maggie Lewis to the Capital Improvement Board of Managers. Proposal numbers 93 and 94, both, both refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal number 93, introduced by councillors Evans and Robinson, appoints Alonso Anderson to the Juvenile Detention Center Advisory Board. Proposal number 94, introduced by councillors Adamson, Jackson, and Oliver, requires the administration and operation of the county jail facilities be non-privatized, beginning in 2023. Proposal numbers 95 through 97, all refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 95, introduced by councillor Mascari, authorizes intersection controls at Keystone Lakes Drive and Way and Villa Avenue in District 21. Proposal number 96, introduced by councillor Kreider, authorizes a speed limit reduction of 25 miles per hour in the Meridian Meadows subdivision in District 23. Proposal number 97, introduced by councillor Miller, authorizes parking restrictions on Georgia Street between Capitol Avenue and Pennsylvania Street in District 16. Proposal number 98, introduced by councillor Ossley, refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, amends the code to split the Community Affairs and Education Committee into two separate committees. Mr. President, this concludes the introduction of proposals.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders, priority business. Proposal number 101 is a rezoning ordinance certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission on March the 2nd. This particular rezoning was before us at our November the 20, November 2017 council meeting, as proposal 343. Because of an error made by the submitting agency, we must act on it again. And at this time, I will ask our attorney, Fred Beesicker, to explain the circumstances on this proposal. Councillor Beesicker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this one has, this one has an unusual procedural history. Petition number 2016, Zone 20, has been presented to the council once before. Make a long, try to make a long story short, when the, when the project or when the proposal originally started, the proposed rezoning, it covered 12.69 acres. By the time it actually got to the MDC for hearing and vote, it was down to roughly 5.8 acres, and there were some other changes with respect to the permitted uses and that sort of thing. What happened, in a nutshell, was that the, the MDC voted to deny the five-acre proposal, but the MDC made a mistake and certified to the council in late October, the 12.69-acre proposal. So that's what the council had before it in early November of last year, but that was not an accurate description of what the MDC had actually acted on. So, once that came to the DMD administrator's attention, they issued the, what's now proposed, our proposal 101, and the administrator noted that the, the petition was originally certified to the City County Council on October 27, 2017, with a materially inaccurate description of the request. The description has been corrected, and the petition is hereby recertified to the, to the City County Council. And because it does appear that there are significant substantive differences between what was certified last October and what was certified recently, that the MDC has recertified it, so, so the council is permitted to go ahead and act on it, or not act on it, as the council so chooses this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Beesicker. If no councillor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the denial will stand. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Councillor Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish to call down proposal 101 for reconsideration for the full council.
Very good. Is there a second? All right, very good. Councillor Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a particularly complicated zoning case with a 13-plus-year history, so in the interest of brevity and everyone's time, I'm going to try to keep this short. I do want to make a note that there are full details on the proposed Alexander Project, as well as the originally proposed Kite Project, on norahindeed.org, so you can look at and find a detailed version of the facts there. You can also find lots of details on my own website, colleenfanning.com, where I've detailed the history of the process. But in a nutshell, Nora Council voted down the variance request petitions for the Alexander Project last fall. And then subsequently, it was also denied at the MDC, as councillor Beesicker indicated. Immediately after that, several members of the Nora Community Council reached out to me, expressing concerns that the alternatives to that project, they were very concerned that, how negative those alternatives could be in terms of impact, not just trees, as has been widely discussed, but also traffic impact, safe crossings, drainage, noise buffers, and other considerations. At the time, there was nothing to be done, but with the significant error by the city that DMD made at the end of the year, it, once we confirmed that that indeed did need to be recertified, it did give the opportunity for this proposal to come before this body and called, be called down. So, the history of this parcel is complex, as I've noted. It was granted a DP zoning in 2005, when it was owned by Kite. That project included 66,000 square feet of big-box store, expansive surface parking, 31 large condominiums, and the near-clear cutting of the trees. So, we have an idea of the trees we're talking about. There's 3,400 caliber inches of trees on the entire parcel, and that project would allow, saving up to 27 trees, which is not much at all. So that was kind of the background, and that, that zoning still stands today. The proposed alternative was significantly lesser impact. So I was asked by the Nora Community Council, which is the Registered Neighborhood Association, to call down this proposal so that the neighborhood could continue to negotiate a lesser impactful project on that parcel. The Nora Alliance, which is, which is also a registered neighborhood association in the area, though they do not focus on specific land use issues, has also supported this. The councillors in their packets have letters of support from, official letters of support from Ruth Hayes, the president of North Community Council, Karen Hamilton, the president, the longtime president of Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association, even though Driftwood Hills does not have their own land use committee, they are not certified. We also have the official requests, electronic requests, from both Nora Alliance and Nora Community Council to call this down before the full council for a hearing. And we also have a letter of support from Mr. Neil Sinclair, who's in the audience, who is an adjacent property owner. The important thing to note is that what we are voting on tonight is not the approval of any project. It's not the approval of the Alexander Project, it is not the denial of the Alexander Project. It is allowing Nora Community Council to continue to negotiate with the developer to get the best possible development outcome, which they have directly requested. The Kite Project, for which Keystone has already, Keystone Development, the current owners, has already started the permitting process. If this call-down fails, they could absolutely proceed with that project, and the decisions that will be made if this call-down fails will be solely between Keystone and the Department of Metropolitan Development. There will be no legal, legal mechanism by which any neighborhood association nor special interest group can remonstrate or have any sort of legal opposition to that. We don't have any reason to believe that the Kite Project cannot go forward. The Department of Metropolitan Development, including the director and a deputy mayor, have assured me that an acceptable tree mitigation plan can indeed be offered by Keystone. That is not unthinkable, and it is probably possible, and that will only exist in the communication between the city and Keystone. Neighbors will have no say in that. And Keystone might actually fight the legality of the requirement of a tree mitigation plan there. In fact, that's been mentioned to me several times. One also, one thing that also should be noted is that if this call-down fails and Keystone decides that they are no longer interested in developing this, this parcel because of the lengthy nature of this process, it is absolutely legal for them, since the tree requirements are only tied to the, the plan that includes the Kite Project, for them to actually cut down all of the trees if they deem it would make the property more saleable. So, if trees are your interest, I would say that calling down this proposal is essential. The Alexander Project, as it stands today, before the neighborhood gets a chance to renegotiate it for their favor, would save approximately half of the 3,400 caliber inches of trees. Without that call-down, the neighborhood has no say. So I ask for your support today because my constituents, the Nora Community Council and the Nora Alliance, in representing their 66 neighborhoods in Nora, have requested to continue the negotiation and to continue to be part of the process so that they can have a larger voice in determining the best possible outcome for this parcel.
Thank you, Councillor Fanning. Are there any other comments from fellow councillors? Councillor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to relationships that I have on both sides of this issue, I would request an abstention.
Thank you. For the record, I too will be abstaining from this proposal. Are there any other comments from fellow councillors? Councillor Oliver.
Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote before I vote. I live in a district, all the councillors have a district that they live in, and we kind of have a, a support for one another that unless there's something overreaching and overriding, that affects me to such a point that I would oppose what a councillor is trying to do in her, here's a her district, I would consider that. So far, I have not heard anything that would indicate that I would not, I would be supporting, I would not be supporting Councillor Fanning. I will be supporting her, because I have not heard anything to suggest that I should not support what she's doing. I'm a firm believer that, I know councillors get calls in my district about some concerns, relatives, or what have you, stop signs, or other matters, and they have called me to let me know that someone called me in my district, and they tried to take care of the problem, but they let me know, and that's fine, and I appreciate that. At the same time, if a councillor has something going on in her district, here's a her district, that their community's concerned, unless it's something, unless they're dumping toxics in the Fall Creek and it's running all the way through my district, I'd probably object to that. But so far, I've not heard anything that would suggest that I would not be supporting Councillor Fanning, and I do that willingly. And thank you so much. I just want to explain my vote before I do, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Oliver. Any further comments from fellow councillors? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to the board for a vote. Green in support of the call-down, red in opposition of the call-down. Very good. The, the motion carries with a vote of 20 to 3, with two abstentions. The next item on the agenda? My apologies. Councillor, Councillor Beesicker.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the motion having passed, I read the following announcement. Mr. President, this council will hold a public hearing on rezoning petition number Council proposal number 108, 2018, at its next regular meeting on Monday, April 9, 2018, such meeting to convene at 7:00 PM in these council chambers in the City County Building in Indianapolis. This petition proposes to rezone 5.80 acres at 2730 East 86th Street, 8707, 8711, 8717, and 8727, Haverstick Road, from the DP District to the DP classification, to provide for certain C1 and C3 uses and one heavy general retail use limited to the sale of home accessories, decoration, and/or furniture, not exceeding 15,000 square feet in gross leasable area within a 60,000-square-foot, two-story commercial bill, building, excuse me, per the preliminary DP Plan Phase 1. Site plans, elevations, and commitments all filed dated August 3, 2017. Written objections that are filed with the clerk of the council shall be heard at such time, or the hearing may be continued from time to time as found necessary by the council. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Councillor Beesicker. The next item on the agenda is proposal number, proposals number 102 to 109. All are rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on March the 2nd and March the 7th. If no councillor wishes to call down the proposal, for, for the proposals for reconsideration, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda, special orders, public hearing. Proposal number 88. Refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 88 approves of an additional appropriations totaling $14,450,000 in the 2018 budget of the Department of Public Works, Transportation General, and Capital Assets Development Funds, to cover expenses for personnel, supplies, contractors, and capital equipment needed to address the emergency repairs of city streets. Thomas Cook, Chief of Staff for the Office of Mayor Joe Hogsett, and Dan Parker, Director of the DPW, reviewed with the committee a PowerPoint presentation in detail and illustrated how the winter did affect our roads over the last couple of years, what this proposal will do, where this appropriation is coming from. Councillor Kreider stated that if this proposal does not pass, will it impact the 2018 projects? And Director Parker answered in the affirmative that that was correct. Councillor McHenry asked Mr. Parker to explain on crack ceiling, and Mr. Parker said that DPW has a line item in their capital plan for $1 million specifically for crack ceiling. Councillor McHenry moved, seconded by councillor Ossley. Councillor McHenry moved seconded by Councillor Osley to send proposal 88 to the full council to do pass recommendation, but before we do vote on that, I understand that we have an amendment to this with Councillor Simpson.
Councillor Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chairman Adamson. Mr. President, there's a motion to amend proposal number 882018. I've moved to amend proposal 20, proposal number 882018 by adding the language that is underlined in Section 4, and by adding a new Section 7, and renumbering the current Section 7 as Section 8, to read as the following. Section 4, in support of appropriation provided in Section 2, revenues total up to 13 million are to be transferred from the Ready Day Fund to the Transportation General Fund, and if I'm staying correct, they already have $1 million in there, so that 14 million is still in effect, Chairman.
I'm understanding, yes.
Just want to make sure. Section 7, on or before March 31st, June 30th, September 30th, and December 31 of 2018, the Department of Public Works shall submit a report to the Public Work Committee of the City County Council. The report shall include at minimum, include at a minimum, the following information with respect to the potholes repaired, strip patchings, resurfacing work funded by this ordinance. The appropriate number of potholes repaired, the cost of that work, including the amount of overtime paid, the identification of all areas strip patch or resurfaces, and the cost of that work, including the amount of overtime paid, a plan, budget, and a schedule for the work to be done in the succeeding calendar quarter, the identification of all vendors, and the amount of their respective contract, and the amount paid under those contracts, the amount of and type of liability insurance coverage carrier and provided by each vendor, and the number and amount of claims by the city of Indianapolis against a vendor alleging defect of material or workmanship. This ordinance shall be in full effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. Mr., turn it back over to Mr. Chairman. And I so move.
Second, Mr. President.
The motion to amend has been properly moved and seconded. Are there additional comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Simpson.
I would not be a good friend of Dan Parker if he didn't come up here and explain to us, is he good with this and what he may have to add to it? So, oh, your thumb is up? Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. May I proceed?
Yes, you can, sir.
Are there additional comments from councilors? Seeing no more comments, we'll proceed to the board for our vote.
They have a couple terms.
On the amendment. This is, yes, thank you, this is strictly on the amendment. The motion to amend passes by a vote of 25 to 0. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move that we, that this body approve proposal number 88 as amended.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded, as amended. Are there any final comments from councilors? Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. When Councillor Feaster and I were meeting with Director Parker, one of the things I was discussing is how do we explain to people how we're spending $14 million on potholes, patch stripping, crack sealing, et cetera, when we would be using that money on resurfacing normally, because it pains me greatly that we're not doing that? Because we have a big problem, is the reason why, but how do we explain the big problem? So I created a visual. I understand people in the audience can't read the numbers, the picture is more important. This visual is based off DPW figures, and I've taken this to all my neighborhood meetings. It's really helped when people can understand what's going on. I will go through it quickly. All of the councilors do have this in front of them as well. So if you imagine a blood drive, every year we have to get to a certain point to fully fund the money necessary to keep our roads at a fair condition. Let me stress, a fair condition. That number is $178 million. So every year, our DPW budget has to be $178 million. If it is not, any gap goes into the backlog. This backlog today, as of DPW's estimates, is $731 million, almost 732. Now let me stress, that didn't happen under the current administration. That didn't even happen under the previous administration. This is years and years of the blood drive not reaching its goal, and every year going into this backlog. When you have a $731 million backlog to reach, again, fair condition, a winter like we had tears our roads up. We went above and below freezing so many times that even though it didn't snow, when rain gets in those cracks, it tears it up. So when you have $731 million of a backlog, that's why we have so many potholes. This year, we have an $88 million budget, so you can already do the math, that means $90 million theoretically is going into the backlog. Now I want to point out, $88 million, kudos to the mayor, this is the biggest it's been in quite some time. The gas tax is in here, a lot of people ask, is the gas tax helping? Absolutely it is. The gas tax rose our blood drive up a little higher. But the bottom line is, we are even underfunding this year, so we are actually adding to the backlog this year. Now the 14 million is going to help, that's going to raise us up higher. We're spending 8 million more on the GM stamping plant site to fix up Oliver, the bridge, some backlog, some of this backlog, so it's going to get up even higher. But we have to, every year, figure out how to find $178 million. Forget the fact that down in the bubble, we have $2.2 billion of things that don't exist. This is sidewalks that the city doesn't have, but has identified it needs. That's 1.5 billion right there. This is street lane miles that are missing. So we actually have 2.2 billion that doesn't even exist yet. And by the way, if we were to build those out, every time we build one, the cost to maintain it goes up. So this 178 million dollars goes up even more. So we kind of lose by winning if we put money down here. So that's why we're talking aggressively about how do we find money to fund this gap every year? The commuter tax is a great idea, I'd love to see that happen, but that's only one idea. Going back and getting more money from the gas tax, another idea. Not giving away $500,000 in free parking meter baggings, that's been an obsession of mine the last couple of years. We're giving away money to not-for-profits when they bag the meters in downtown events for free. We're also giving $100,000 a year to the state, but I'm going to let that one go for now. That one bugs me too. But these are, those are little things, but that's a half a million dollars a year, a half a million dollars closer to reaching our goal. So we all, the council, the administration, everyone, needs to be laser focused on finding where can we put more funding to this. We've worked for a long time to fund the police more because we needed to, because we were down officers by 100 at least, if not more. Now we actually have an infrastructure crisis, we've seen it this year. So I just wanted people to see the big picture and know that we really are focused on this. It's painful, we're spending $14 million tonight to do maintenance, but you know what? That's where we're at. So we've got to solve this, and we're all going to be working on it. I'm clearly in support tonight of this money. And thank you to Director Parker for doing such a good job of getting us this information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Miller. Are there additional comments from councilors? Counselor Oliver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for showing that visual there. That, where are we going to get help from? You say we've got to get some money from somewhere. It's embarrassing, you drive down Capitol Avenue, right in front of the State Office Building, those 100 representatives and 50 senators drive there every day, right where they work at, that's where the money is at, and they won't give it up, and they driving through potholes to get to work themselves. I wish more taxpayers, like myself, would try to get those legislators to do the kind of things that need to be done, so we won't be embarrassed, as we have been. At beautiful hotel, JW Marriott, you got to drive through Capitol Avenue to get there, that's humiliating, Mr. President. I wish those at the State House are listening, to those of us in Indianapolis, Marion County, we're in dire need of help, and we look to them to supply us with that help, and I thank you again for that illustration. And, Mr. President, I do support the passing of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Oliver. Counselor McCallum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I originally intended to offer an amendment tonight to this proposal, that would basically require the release of additional infrastructure funds to get more road projects on the docket immediately. However, due to the need to keep certain funds in our accounts for the purpose of federal matching dollars, plus not wanting to slow the repair of chuck holes that are currently underway, I'm not offering any such amendment. However, I do urge the DPW and Mayor Hogset to begin releasing dedicated funds to continue repairing our roads and prevent future problems from happening as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCallum. Any further comments from councilors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Clay.
Thank you. I don't know if this is the most appropriate time, but perhaps it is, if not, you can advise. When we talk about the undisputed need for these additional dollars for addressing the potholes in Indianapolis, and allocating these dollars to the general fund of DPW, can we have some discussion, some enlightenment about how those dollars will be bidded out? I'm particularly concerned about qualified minority vendors having an opportunity to be a part of helping to affect these repairs, and I don't know that we've heard that to any amplified discussion. It may have been raised at the committee level, but before we pass these dollars out and make them available, I would like to know what the commitment is with respect to minority vendors, either primary or subs, having an opportunity to be beneficiary of these dollars.
Very good, Counsel Clay. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With your permission, I'd like to bring forward Director of DPW, Dan Parker, to address the issue of the ongoing minority and women business contracts that DPW does engage with, most particularly this $13 million.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Adamson. Dan Parker, Director, Indianapolis Department of Public Works. Counselor Clay, to answer your question specifically, the four vendors that are currently out doing the strip patching are, excuse me, three vendors, we had one vendor doing chuck hole filling, are road contractors that do work with the city of Indianapolis on a continual basis. They're pre-qualified and certified to do road contracting and road work for the city. Some of the workers that are out doing the work were recognized tonight. The question related to minority contracting for this particular type of work, there is only one minority contractor that is pre-qualified by NDOT to do this type of work, and they do not bid on our road work. That contractor, All-Star Paving, is our crack sealing contractor, so they do our crack sealing work. You heard Counselor Adamson in the report from the Public Works Committee talk about the crack sealing that is done by DPW. That is done by All-Star Paving, which is the only pre-qualified NDOT minority contractor to do work on roads here in Indianapolis. So the one contractor that is qualified, we do work with them, but they do not bid on our, this type of road work. The emergency, the legal counsel for DPW is here, and he can speak better to the language in the emergency clause related to the emergency declaration, but the sum of that says that we, with the emergency declaration that was declared on February 21st, that we could seek at least two bids for this road work from people that we've known to do the work. We actually went out and asked for four, we accepted three of them. They were within a few dollars of each other. So that's the situation with the current road contractors in the situation related to the minority contracting firm.
Mr. President, with your permission, may I follow through?
Please.
So is it, I want to be clear, if I can, Director, that the one minority contractor that is pre-certified and qualified to do this work has chosen not to do this work for the city of Indianapolis, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's the All-Star Pavement Company?
All-Star Paving.
Paving?
Yes.
Okay. And then with respect to the emergency declaration for those individuals that are known to do the service, how many minorities have participated or were called out under the emergency declaration?
There were none. The four that were asked were four known road contracting firms that do work for the city of Indianapolis.
Were they African-American?
The owners of those?
The four known.
The four known, they are not.
But they are minorities.
They're not classified as an MBE, no.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this has been an ongoing topic of conversation on DPW, and I know Councillor Oliver and Councillor Gray have both brought this up. I think we have a disconnect between the various businesses in Marion County, minority businesses, and getting them certified to make sure that they are in that list of certified businesses to pick from. I would like to invite Councillor Oliver and Councillor Gray, and then Councillor Clay, if you'd be interested, to open up a dialogue with local businesses to help them get certified so that they are able to be among those businesses chosen, if you'd be interested to do that as part of the DPW committee.
Very good. Thank you, Counsel Adamson. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Parker, I sent you that exact question Saturday, I haven't got a response yet. If you could codify that in a response, because people are holding us accountable, and I want to be able to, when I say us, councilmen, and when they ask that question, I want to be able to deliver the response that was given to us. So you could codify that response in the response to the email that I sent you, and I just resent it again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to proposal 88?
Yes, Larry Vaughn, please. Mr. President, we can never fairly assess the money that is appropriated in these chambers for actual DPW, because they don't have a commissioner to receive those funds and protect them against every time the mayor wants extra money to shore up his budget. They go and take money from DPW, also, they take it from the IMPD, our law enforcement. Why? Because as soon as you vote this budget out, be it a million or $100 million, the mayor takes jurisdiction over it immediately, just as he's doing tonight, taking jurisdiction over this $13 million, moving it to the general fund where he can spend it or do whatever he wants to do with it. So we'll never catch up, as for the chart, Councillor Miller has just showed, just displayed, it shows the details. Every year, the money is appropriated to DPW to fix our streets so that we can conduct commerce in this city, so that we can get back and forth to work. Every year, the mayor rakes his hand through it, I don't care who the mayor is, he has the ability to rake his hands through that budget and take every penny of it if he wants to, and it's going to continue to happen until the DPW has a commissioner to receive the funds that this council appropriates for them, and take those funds, and guard them against the Pelager, which is the chief executive of this city, and that happens to be the mayor at this time. So the argument that we're having here tonight is really irrelevant, because once you have appropriated that money, then you have no jurisdiction over it, and the mayor can do with it what he wants. Even this emergency funds, these $13 million, he can take that money and do whatever he wants to. So I think you're doing a disservice to your constituents by leading them in a direction that does not exist.
Thank you. Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like sometimes we let things be said, and we don't challenge them, and I feel like that's a mistake. I would just like to ask- I would just like to ask the question perhaps to the chairman of the committee or even to our CFO. Can DPW account for contracts awarded in the amount that we are appropriating dollars to them?
Counsel Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Johnson, we can and we do all throughout the committee process. The mistake that is made in the statement that we just heard is that once these dollars are appropriated into a specific fund or character within a fund, they can't be moved to a different fund. They can be spent at the discretion of the department from within that fund, but they can't be moved out.
One more thing, Mr. President. I think I have the floor, Mr. Vaughn. Could Mr. Parker also confirm that same statement, that we in fact do have a match for every appropriation that we give in terms of contracted work that is done throughout the city?
Mr. Parker.
Counsel Johnson, every contract that DPW enters into is approved by the Board of Public Works. This council just appointed two members to that board. So every contract we enter into has to be approved by the Board of Public Works. Even these emergency contracts still have to go back to the Board of Public Works to be approved by the Board of Public Works.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, I'll give you one minute.
He had never mentioned the real problem is that he does not have jurisdiction over one cent of that money that you appropriate to him. The mayor, whoever he is, can come into that budget and take whatever amount that he wants to use for any purpose he wants after you appropriate it. So that's what he failed to mention. So you're barking up the wrong tree with him.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments from anyone in the audience? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries with a vote of 25 to 0. There's no business under special orders, unfinished business, and we will proceed to special orders final adoption. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 4. Refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee heard Proposal Number 4, which amends the code to add Chapter 901 regarding hotels of places of public lodging. Counsel Evans stated that several hotels in his district have been point of contingents and safety in his neighborhoods. He stated that they have been receiving extremely high numbers of police runs. Counsel Evans presented a spreadsheet with all the hotels in the city as well as an amendment to the proposal. Ryan Mann, Department of Business and Neighborhood Services, DBNS, licensed administrators, stated that they are tasked with licensing the hotels in the city and stated that Counsel Evans' proposal takes a data-driven approach and also amends the ordinance to include concerns of several agencies to make sure that there is at least a baseline expectation for anyone who wishes to open or maintain a hotel in the city. Chair Lewis asked Counsel Evans to address an email that the committee received regarding his proposal and the possibility of how the proposal impacts our homeless neighbors. Counsel Evans stated that he fears that this might possibly end up hurting some individuals that may find themselves unable to go to a particular hotel, but that have to be put, but they have to put the pressure on these hotels to provide a safe place for all. Mr. President, I do believe that we have a couple of amendments. With your permission, I would like to ask Counsel Evans to share that information.
Thank you, Chairwoman Lewis. Please, Counsel Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend Section 1 of Proposal Number 4, 2018, as previously amended in committee by deleting the language that is double-stricken through and adding the double underlined language in the highlighted portions to read as follows. Toward the bottom of the page, you will see where it says calls for service shall not include calls to law enforcement made by employees. The added part is "or agents." Just below that, when addressing calls for service shall not include calls, at the very bottom of that paragraph highlighted, you will see "or calls initiated by off-duty officers hired by the hotel to provide security." Going to page 3, under Section 902-204, Application Review, Grounds for Denial. In the highlighted portion, the second sentence which says, "which require the administrator to deny any application for a new license or renewal of a license and exempt as provided in subsections E and F of this section," under which the administrator may deny any application for a new license or renewal of a license. Page 4. Under Number 4, you will see in the highlighted portion, stricken out, calls for service including total number of calls for service or calls for service ratio are greater than 1.2, 2.5 over a one-year period. Added, you will see for any hotel operating in a probationary period, the calls for the service ratio is at or above 2.5 over any one-year period after entering probation. Going down to Number 9, you will see Part F taken out and subsection E and A added. On the final page, excuse me, on page 5, under Section 901-303, probationary period, 1.2 is stricken out. And then in the highlighted area, you will also see that stricken is "in two years," taken out, will be notified it is operating in a probationary period, also taken out, that may result in the requirements outlined in Sections 901, 205A and B. And on the final page, on the backside, under Sections 901-304, automatic security requirements for continued calls for service ratio at or above 1.5 probationary notice. Under A, you will see stricken out calendar years and added one-year periods. Under Letter B, you will see stricken calendar years and added one-year period. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion to amend has been properly moved and seconded. Are there further comments from counselors? Counsel Clay.
Thank you. I just want to observe for the record that the counselor labor with respect to amplifying this issue to our community should also not go without some notice and some appreciation for how Counselor Jared Evans has brought this attention to our community's consciousness and has moved this kind of legislation forward. And so I'd like to be named as a co-sponsor of this because this is really what we're talking about when we're addressing what impacts people where they live. This was a laborious effort, but it was well done and well executed.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel Coats.
Yes, question probably for our council attorney. Mr. President, does this include or exclude the excluded cities in Marion County?
Thank you, Counsel Coats. Counsel Biesecker.
No, this does not apply to the excluded cities.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel Gray.
Just a question on Number 5, under 901-304, that you must be 21 to check into a hotel. Is that to all hotels or just these particular hotels?
Counsel Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you repeat the question, sir?
Number 5, implementation of minimum age of 21 for check-in for lodging. Is that just for this hotel or is this for all hotels?
Just give me one second, sir.
Not just these type of hotels, but for holiday homes or everywhere.
I'll tell you what, Counsel Biesecker, are you able to address the question from Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray, could you, yes, could you give the reference again in the section?
901-304, Number 5.
Thank you.
Implementation of minimum age of 21 for check-in for lodging properties. And I just want to know if this would also be to the downtown hotels as well as these hotels or just for these hotels?
Counsel Biesecker, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, that, the implementation of minimum of age of 21 for check-in, that doesn't kick in until you've had two consecutive years above, at or above 2.5. It's under 901-304. So I don't know the answer to what the normal, the normal check-in age is, but this, but the way this is drafted, this would be a requirement that only kicks in after you've had two consecutive one-year periods where your calls for service ratio is at or above 2.5.
Is the same thing for the credit card?
Yeah, same thing with the credit cards. That's right.
Counsel McCullin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not an attorney, but the way I'm reading this, aren't these items that are currently the law, these aren't things that are being changed with this legislation? Isn't currently the law that no matter what, got to be 21 no matter what, requirement of use of a valid credit card? Aren't those current laws? This isn't something we're changing, is it?
On the, I thank you, Mr. President, yeah, on the, the requirement of a credit card, I believe, I don't believe that exists generally. But again, this would only, this is one of those requirements that would only kick in after you've had one year, actually after you've had two consecutive years of being above 2.5. So it would be a change in the law. I'm not sure about the 21 minimum age. I just don't know the answer to that one way or the other. But on the credit cards, my understanding is that is a requirement that doesn't exist generally, but again, it would only kick in here if you've had two consecutive years of 2.5 or above.
Thank you, Counsel Biesecker. Counselor Evans.
Mr. President, to clarify on that, this is something that's already in place, so we're not adding it with this.
Very good. Thank you. All right, if there are no more comments from fellow counselors, we'll proceed to the board for a vote on the amendment. Am I required to? Counsel Simpson. Counsel Simpson? Very good. All right, the motion for the amendment carries by a vote of 25 to 0.
Mr. President, I move Proposal Number 4 as amended.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded as amended. Final comments from counselors? Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to applaud Counsel Evans. I remember when I first joined the council, I came in with a laundry list of things I wanted to do, and he's done the same. I'm sure we're going to see a lot more from him, but this is the start of an incredible thing. This reminds me of the landlord registry that we did before. Basically, we needed to hold accountable folks that were being a problem in the neighborhoods. And we looked at objective ways to figure that out and objective ways to hold them accountable and ways for them to get out of that situation once they began to get into it. In fact, this is, I'm really impressed. I wish I'd seen this when we did the landlord registry, to be honest. I want to go back and look at it now and see if there's not more we should do. This probationary period is brilliant. It allows someone to not lose their license immediately. I want to say to everybody here, I don't think anybody here is going to have a problem because, number one, you care enough to show up. You care enough to say, I want to understand what's going on. You care enough that you don't want to see this happen to you. But I can tell you, there are--
Just a moment, please.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President.
There will be no comments, there will be no comments without permission. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. But there were hotels on the list that Counsel Evans first put out and has continued to put out that are in my district. They've never called me. So I'm really glad we're doing this because, again, you all are here. You're going to try your best. There are some that didn't even take the time to call and say, hey, what is this thing? There's one that borders Counsel Kreider's district that hotels in mind, but the problem's actually emanated into his neighborhood. So we were both getting lots of Facebook posts saying, aren't you going to do something? Doesn't anybody care? Why doesn't the city care? Why doesn't the council care? I mean, we have to do something. But it's important to remember, too, that whatever we do tonight, I hope this passes tonight, obviously, I'm going to be voting in support of it, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, please. But remember, it's not done. If we need to tweak this, we can tweak it. If the process isn't working as well as we thought, we can change it. There is a long time, there's a lot of discussion to happen here, but we have to, as a city, take a stand and say, this is what is acceptable and this is what is not. And then from there, we move forward, we adjust, but we have to take a stand. And right now, our ordinance on hotel licenses is about this big, and that's probably being generous. It's very, very small. This is making a way that everybody can understand what is the right way to proceed and the wrong way to proceed and to operate in that environment. Again, I applaud you, Counsel Evans. Fantastic work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Miller. Are there any other comments from fellow counselors? Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to highlight a couple, or to the counselors, at your desk, there are a couple of documents. One is going to be titled 2007 Hotel Runs Per Room. On the left-hand column is the hotel address, and moving to the right is the number of rooms, the council district that the hotel is in, the amount of fire runs, both IFD and in the respective townships Decatur, Wayne, and Pike, the IMPD total runs. And then directly to the right of that is the IMPD filter runs, the filter being what is mentioned in this ordinance. And then you have the combined fire and IMPD filter runs. And that is the one that you want to look at, both IMPD and IFD, and that is how we come with that ratio that is on the far right. Underneath that, there is a map with the, at this point, hotels that are 2.5 or above for your pleasure to look, see if they're in your district and where. And then the third document is one that we took from Columbus, Ohio, and this was, they were kind of the basis for this ordinance. And I wanted you to see the effects that this has had in their city. So they sent us a document, a graph showing that this not only impacted their hotels, but a 500-foot area outside of the hotels and saw crime decrease significantly. On the first page, you see they had a grand total of 34, and then in the next reporting period, it was down to 17 for that entire year. So that's yours to regard. I also just want to make one other comment, Mr. President. While I have gotten a lot of, I suppose, recognition for this, I also want to thank Counsel Kreider, who's been very important in helping me navigate this and work on this to make this a better proposal. Certainly, this past week, past 10 days has been compelling, I guess, for us. So I want to give him thanks for this because he's been very instrumental in it. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Counsel Evans. Counsel Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to commend Counselors Evans and Kreider. This is a very well-thought-out proposal. I wanted to weigh in because I believe I may or may not be the only person on this council who has been the owner of a hotel. And it's a difficult thing. It's not an easy job to do. But I think these are benchmarks and objectives that every proprietor in the hospitality industry should strive to exceed, not just achieve. And if they are not achievable, then there are mechanisms set forth here where there's help and there's ways where you can get back on track. But it would be my hope that everyone here, you know, makes not these low benchmarks a goal, but really achieves, tries to achieve something higher with their business so that, you know, we can contribute to the community with our businesses altogether. So I look forward to supporting this, and I thank my fellow counselors for their hard work.
Thank you, Counsel Fanning. Are there additional comments from fellow counselors? Counsel Oliver.
Just a question from Derek Evans. How did you, the rationale, how you arrived at the 500-feet radius, is that a common practice?
Please, Counsel Evans.
If I may, thank you. Counsel Oliver, that was just something that Columbus, their police department, sent to us as evidence that the measure was working in their city. I don't know how they derived to 500.
Does that suggest that 500 feet mean that there may be some association that's off the property, but it may be some association with the hotel or motel? Is that correct?
Correct. What they were, the reason why they sent that to us was that-- What they were, the reason why they sent that to us was that the associating crime around the hotel also was reduced--
Okay.
--due to that hotel ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel Oliver. Are there any further questions from fellow counselors? All right, I want to be clear in the room this evening that this, that there will not be a public hearing in this room this evening on this proposal. The public hearing for this proposal was last week Monday, March the 5th.
So can you ask some questions as to that?
Any additional comments from fellow counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote on the amended petition. And it carries by a vote of 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 84, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 84 amends Chapter 261 of the code to establish that the solid works, solid waste division of a, as a separate division of the Department of Public Works. Counsel Oliver moves, seconded by Counsel Kreider, to send proposal 84 to the full council to do pass recommendation that motion carried by a vote of 9 to 0, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from fellow counselors? Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize, I had to leave the meeting before we got to this proposal, but I did get a question from a constituent asking, "Is this an actual change to how we're doing business or is it codifying how we're really doing business today?" Like, is this going to change how the department works? And I'm so sorry that I didn't know that answer in advance, but thank you.
Counsel Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. It doesn't change anything as it relates to the public. It changes, basically removes a lot of the hoops and loops that DPW has to do in order to do what they're already doing.
Thank you. Any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries by a vote of 24 to zero. There's no business under special service district councils. We will proceed to new business. Election of the clerk of the council. I received from our clerk, Natrina DeBeau, notice that she has accepted another position outside of the council, and her last day as clerk will be Friday, March 16th. To ensure that there is no vacancy for this position between our meetings, I'm requesting that the council elect a new clerk. At this time, I will entertain nominations for clerk of the council.
Mr. President?
Counsel Scales.
I would like to make a motion that, to fulfill the vacated responsibilities of Council Clerk Natrina DeBeau, that we nominate Sarita Puckett to take on those responsibilities. I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Counsel McCullin.
Mr. President, I move we close nominations.
Second.
All those in favor of-- it's all right. Sarita Puckett Hughes.
Sarita Puckett Hughes, my, please, my apologies.
All those in favor of closing nominations and thereby electing Sarita Hughes as clerk of the council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, congratulations, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say thank you to Trina DeBeau for all the years of exceedingly high professionalism and making our job that much easier. I know that it's a very difficult process working with 25 of us, you know, so I just wanted to say that I personally appreciate the effort that you have delivered and the professionalism that you've given us, so thank you.
A point of personal privilege, if you don't mind, there is one of us this evening who's enjoying a birthday. Yes, may the birthday person please stand. Counsel Scales, happy birthday. Counsel Fister.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to say happy birthday to Counsel Scales as well, but I also do have an announcement. My 15th Annual Job Fair is scheduled for April the 10th. We already have about 30 employers, we probably will end up somewhere around 60 to 70, so that will be April the 10th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Lakeview Church, which is at 47 Beachway Drive, so any and all. It's for entry level or management. Any and all that are looking for a job, please come see us, April 10th.
Very good, thank you. Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we're trying to, I'm hosting a job readiness training and job hiring fair for youth ages 16 to 24, not just for the summer, so we're trying to get youth jobs to help reduce crime, build self-esteem, and also be able to enter the workforce so they can take care of themselves or help become self-sufficient and assist in their families as well. That is Friday, March 23rd, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Go to pathwayindie.org to register, and it's going to be at Light of the World Christian Church, Friday, March 23rd. That's not this Friday, the following Friday. Be there at 8:00. Parents, help get our youth there, they need us. Churches, community groups, schools, we always talking about our kids are not doing anything, they're in crime, they're in trouble, but when there's an opportunity to assist them to do better, we don't. So hold yourself accountable, take a youth there. All you have to do is drop them off at 8:00 and pick them back up at 3:00. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Counsel Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I also would like to add to the chorus of job fairs going on. On Monday, the 26th of March, from 11:00 o'clock to 3:00 p.m. at Martin University, we are hosting a job fair as well. There'll be a lot of opportunities for in-your-neighborhood-type jobs, too, focusing especially on the east side residents, so, but there will be employers from all over the city there. So if you're looking for work, if you know someone who's looking for work, make sure you share with them. There are three opportunities that we just listed here to help put our fellow residents to work, so I hope you can make it out.
Thank you, Counsel Adamson. Counsel Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief. If you are looking for an alternative St. Patrick's Day celebration, I will be participating in a TEDx Wabash College Forum. The theme this year is reshaping reality, and my particular talk is on bridging the political divide, so something very pertinent. You can check out tickets, and if you can't make it to Crawfordsville, all of the talks will be available online shortly thereafter on YouTube.
Thank you very much. The docketed agenda for this meeting of the council, having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counsel McCullin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been asked to offer the following motions for adjournment. By Counsel McCullin, in memory of Paul A. Richard, Catherine Richard, and Deputy Jacob Jake M. Pickett. By Counsel Adamson, in memory of Doug Prewood and Sonya Bracy. By Counsel Johnson, in memory of Linda Walker. By Counsel Oliver, in memory of Twanita Jo Lee. By Counsel Corte, in memory of James Renard and Rudy Garza. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask to support of fellow counselors. A further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body, that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel McCullin. Hearing no objections, the motion is received and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.